Okay, the hour being after six forty-five, we'd like to call the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first order of business is the Walpole High School student report, and we have Grace Ryan here with us, and Favor, who's a new representative as well.
Good evening, my name is Grace, and I'm a senior at the high school. Shadowing me tonight is our newest sophomore student representative, Favor. The school year is off to a great start, and students are settling into their classes. The first two days of school had an adjusted schedule with eighty-minute classes. Wednesday, students went to periods one through four, and Thursday, students went to periods five through eight. Students enjoyed a four-day weekend as they tried to get back in the swing of things and return to day one on Tuesday. There are few changes for this school year, including that only seniors are allowed to go home during last block study. Additionally, seniors with parking spaces now have parking tags to ensure that the correct car is in the correct spot. Next Thursday is back-to-school night, where parents can meet their students' teachers and learn about their classes. Fall sports have gone off to a strong start. Both field hockey and football are undefeated thus far. Boys' and girls' soccer are both looking for their first wins tonight, but have both put up strong performances, with a couple ending in ties. Volleyball is also looking for their first win tonight. Additionally, student support has been strong thus far for sports, as seen with the large student section at last week's football game. Clubs at the high schools started back up very quickly this year. Most clubs, including Latin Club, Community Service Club, UNICEF, Photography Club, and Art Club, are having their first meetings this week. Also this week, the newly-created Unified Basketball Team met for the first time. Lastly, Student Council has big plans for this year. Freshmen are currently gathering signatures from their peers to support their running for Student Council. Freshman orientation was a huge hit as Student Council volunteers guided freshmen around the school. And this week, Student Council is organizing a tailgate with food and games before tomorrow's night football game. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Grace. Any questions for Grace?
Love the enthusiasm. Welcome, Favor.
Excellent, I do have some bad news. The boys' soccer team lost. Just came from that game. We know that you guys are both busy with school, even though it's early, so probably not a lot of homework. You're welcome to stay, but we do know you have other things going on.
Thank you.
All right, the first order of new business is the ratification of the custodial memorandum of agreement. Mr. Fisher?
Okay, just a few points that I wanted to note. I wanted to thank all our custodians over the past couple of years, in particular, for helping to keep our schools healthy and safe. They were the first group to return after the pandemic began and maintain our buildings even in the absence of staff and students. I'd also like to thank the representatives that were a part of the negotiating team, which was Sheila Kearns from AFSMI, John Weber from the DPW, Scott Manson, our head custodian, and all the other members of the negotiating team. I think they came to the table with expectations that were reasonable, and we were able to reach an agreement in one day. The COLA for the new contract is in keeping, or the COLAs were in keeping with all of the school department bargaining units, and the details of the agreement are in your packets, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that.
Three-round chair, it's wonderful. Quick negotiation, which is a testament to the high esteem and collaboration we and maintenance and custodial workers have with each other. I think this is a fair and just contract, and recognizes that these were the folks at the beginning of the pandemic, when we didn't know what was going on, who were running into our school facilities, and also anybody who has to clean a middle school bathroom, God love them, they deserve the world. So I would make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Walpole School Committee and American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees Council ninety-three, Walpole Local nineteen fifty-seven, as presented in our packet.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Bill, second by Nancy, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Can I just add?
Sure, absolutely.
A great job, Mike. It was, you know, it's one of those things that being able to keep that collegial but also professional relationship serves us well, so thank you very much, and please convey, as Bill said, our thanks to them, because they've done a great job for us.
I will, thanks.
Thank you. All right, our next order of business is the out-of-state field trip request for the Walpole High School Girls' Cross Country Team to Warwick, Rhode Island on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Fiona?
Hi, yes. Hi, I'm Fiona Murphy, the co-head coach along with Connor Cashman for the Girls' High School Cross Country Team. We are looking to take about fourteen athletes to Goddard Park in Warwick, Rhode Island for the Ocean State Invitational. We typically do our invitationals around here at Rantham. Towards the end of our season, all of our postseason events take place in Rantham, so we would like to offer them a different opportunity. The boys' team has been going to this meet for a couple of years. This will be the first time that the girls' team will be joining them. It's kind of a last-minute decision through the summer, that's why we're a little bit late on coming for our request on that end, but looking forward to this. A lot of great competition in Rhode Island we don't normally get to race against, and a different opportunity for our athletes to try another venue and have a bit of different race experience, so that is what we're looking for.
Excellent. Any questions?
No, I just support the attendance of this field trip, and I know that we have to have school committee request to waive the thirty-day notice prior to recommending the trip.
Motion to waive thirty-day notice requirement?
Second?
All right, motion by Bill, Nancy, seconded, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Motion approved, so long as you don't go to Roger Williams Zoo.
We will not be going to Roger Williams, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Second?
All right, motion by Bill, second by Nancy, all those in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Awesome, good luck. Thank you. We'll let you know how it goes. Grace can tell you at the next report. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Okay, opening of school reports.
All right, so we have the principals here. What did we start with last year? Was it the preschool?
It was, yeah.
Oh. He remembered.
I'll start. Is that a request or?
I know. We'll start with the high school, we'll start with Principal Imbush.
Nice try, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to another school year. Our school opening at the high school went exceptionally well. On August thirtieth, we invited our incoming freshman students to attend our annual freshman orientation. Almost every ninth-grade student attended, and they enjoyed meeting their teachers and learning about our many clubs and activities. This is always an extremely positive experience for the ninth graders. It gives them the run of the school before the upperclassmen are in the building, and I think it does an awful lot for their self-esteem when they have that ability to check out the school before the others come in. We have about thirteen new staff members across the high school, and the energy that they bring with them is outstanding. These staff include teachers, ESPs, and support staff, and we look forward to building strong professional relationships with them this school year. The students were pleasantly surprised when they saw the new cafeteria furniture that was installed over the summer, and they're very much enjoying their new space. Many students still go outside to eat lunch in the courtyard when the weather cooperates, but it's nice to finally get to a place where we don't have to do that, and we don't have to, you know, put those protocols in place. But it's one of the leftovers from COVID that I think we'll probably hang on to while the weather is nice. Teachers and department chairs are already analyzing data that was gathered through last school year and over the summer. All freshmen and sophomores have taken the I-Ready test to determine if any learning gaps exist in math. This important work will allow us to monitor more closely any student who's deemed to be at risk as the school year begins. I'd like to remind the community that our back-to-school night is on Thursday, September twenty-second. We have a freshman-parent orientation from six to six-thirty, and we invite all our parents in from six-thirty to eight-thirty. We're looking forward to another fabulous year at Walpole High.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
Okay.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
You too.
All right, let's move to the middle schools, and Steve, I know you're going to be talking about Byrd as well.
I am going to be talking about Byrd.
All right.
I'll do my best to be kind. I wanted to start by asking Bill what he has against middle school bathrooms, but I'll explain until later. Good evening, I'm happy to be here to provide an update on the start of the year for our middle schools. Unfortunately, Principal Connor was unable to attend tonight, but I am happy to share the BMS report on his behalf, along with my notes from JMS. This year, BMS welcomed three hundred and seventy-eight students, while JMS welcomed four hundred and eighteen. As usual, the year kicked off with our Grade Six sneak peek programs being held at each school. Those events provided opportunities for our new students to meet the teachers, review their schedules, tour the building, and practice using a combination lock. In all, just over eighty-five percent of our sixth-grade students attended the sneak peaks, and the program helped ensure a smooth and seamless transition for our newest middle school learners. We also held open-door days at each school to give any student and their families the chance to come and get a quick tour of the building, meet with administrators, and ease any anxiety that they might be feeling about starting the year. Many of our, like many of our colleagues, our summers were filled with reviewing resumes, holding interviews, and looking for great candidates to fill vacancies in our schools. At Johnson, that amounted to fifteen new hires, while Byrd is welcoming eleven new members to their team. By all accounts, this group has shown great promise as educators, and we are very pleased to have them joining our learning communities. We wanted to highlight two of those new staff members and share a few details about their work. The first is Jody O'Rourke, our new middle school humanities coordinator. Similar to our other instructional coaches, Mrs. O'Rourke will be providing direct support and leadership for the ELA and Social Studies Departments at both Byrd and Johnson. Her work will focus on the further alignment of curricula, instruction, and assessment at the two schools, the continuity of student learning between the elementary, middle, and high school levels, and developing opportunities to promote reading, writing, and speaking skills across disciplines. The second staff member to highlight is Leah Care, the new school counselor shared by both Byrd and Johnson. Based on departmental feedback and in anticipation of the schools merging, Ms. Care will be serving as the primary counselor for the sixth-grade students at both buildings this year, and then she'll loop with those students to Grade Seven and Grade Eight over the next two years. This arrangement will lay the foundation for the model that we would like to have in place at the new Walpole Middle School, in which each counselor would loop with the students in a particular grade and stay with the same group of learners for their entire middle school experience. We are also happy to report that preparations for the new Walpole Middle School have commenced. During the summer, Compass Construction Management and Fontaine Brothers created a new driveway on the Byrd campus, based on the footprint of where the new building will be erected. This created a new drop-off pickup loop for families and a new bus route through campus that exits onto East Street. A new staff parking lot was also established. The school's administration has been communicating changes to the BMS families on a regular basis and will continue to do so throughout the process. As a result, parent, staff, and bus transportation has been going fairly smoothly and should improve as everyone becomes more familiar with the systems in place. The project is currently between building phases, but further prep work will get underway soon as we move into the next stage of construction. It should be noted that during their opening assemblies, the Byrd administrators spoke with students about ways to be successful this year, and they emphasized that even though there was a construction zone outside of the building, within the school walls, students and staff will be working in a learning zone. Students were encouraged to have and maintain a growth mindset as they entered the year. At JMS, students were challenged to find their voice and to take greater ownership of the learning process, and to support these goals, our staff continues to reimagine the ways we engage and empower our students in the classroom and provide opportunities for enrichment beyond the school day, including increased opportunities for community service and leadership, academic competition, and the return of our popular project-based learning program. The Byrd staff has been reviewing effective classroom objective writing, common assessments, and the school-wide use of diagnostic performance data, including I-Ready, common assessments in math, social studies in ELA, et cetera, to monitor and identify students who need support. At JMS, our professional development for the year will focus on ensuring that our practices around feedback, grading, and assessment accurately measure student learning, are bias-resistant, and work to motivate learners rather than discourage them. The first month seems to be flying by, but we are looking forward to some of our annual events, including our open-house nights, which are both planned for this coming Wednesday, September twenty-first. In addition, staff from BMS, Boydun, and WHS have their meet-and-greet event at the Preserve on September twenty-seventh at five-thirty p.m. As always, both Ed and I would like to extend our appreciation for the continued support and guidance from the members of the school committee, Dr. Goff, Dr. Hahn, and the rest of the central office staff and administration. We'd also like to thank the caring, creative, and dedicated educators who are the foundation of our school communities. We are looking forward to a great year and are grateful for the opportunity to serve the students and families of the Walpole Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like a lot in a couple of weeks.
We don't, you know, we don't move slowly at the middle school.
Great. Excellent, any questions?
Quick question. Could you give a quick summary of the project-based learning program? We're really excited to hear that.
Sure, yeah, so my first day in Walpole was actually, I joined Dr. Hahn, Mr. Hahn at that time, in reviewing the project-based, the outcomes of the project-based learning program that we had in place at the middle schools. It's an opportunity for students to identify and to research and develop solutions to real-world problems, and to have the direct assistance of an advisor, a professional staff advisor with them along the way. They will put together a presentation, they'll put together, what's I'm looking for, models of what they would like to develop in real life, and it's just an opportunity to really kind of extend learning and to take it to another level. And so the opportunity for our students to be able to do that is back, and for us to be able to work throughout the school day and then beyond as well.
Other questions? Good, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, elementary, you're up. So we have Principals Barner, Bemis, and Dearborn, and they're also going to speak for Principal Ogierro, who wasn't able to be here. She, her child has open house, and he's a new middle schooler, so it's an important night for her.
Yes, well, good evening. We're pleased to be here tonight to share a little bit about the start of our new school year. It's been an excellent start with high levels of enthusiasm shared among our students, their families, and our staff. In the four elementary schools combined, we welcomed seventeen hundred eighty-seven students in kindergarten through grade five. Boydun had four hundred eight, has four hundred eight, Elm with four hundred forty-two, Fisher with four hundred seventy-nine, and OPR with four fifty-eight. The enrollment of our kindergarten classes is two fifty-two, and that would be Elm with seventy-one, Fisher eighty-six, Boydun eighty-one, and OPR fifty-four. In addition to our students, we welcomed new staff. Across the four elementary schools, we hired forty-seven new staff. The breakdown is Boydun had twenty-four new staff, with nine of them being teachers, Elm ten new staff with five teachers, and Fisher eleven new staff, five being teachers, and OPR two teachers. We also began the year introducing our new position of STEM teacher, and those stepping into the roles are Kelsey Flanagan at Elm Street School, Kristin Moses at Boydun, Tim Preston at Fisher, and Lindsay Morris at OPR. We're grateful to the school committee for supporting these positions, which will be explained in a little more detail in a few minutes. The energy of the new school year has been present right from the first day. Teachers and staff have created welcoming environments and learning environments for their students. During these initial days and continuing throughout the year, teachers and staff build strong relationships with their students, establishing the expectations for their communities, and setting the stage for learning, a year of learning and growth. Additionally, the collaboration with families to support deep learning for all students is a priority. Each school has held or will hold a first PAC meeting, welcoming new and returning parents, and sharing opportunities for activities for parents to partner with educators. We value high involvement of our parents and guardians. In conjunction with our PACs, we've also held our ice cream socials, providing the opportunity for all of our families to gather outside and connect. Together, we'll have a great year and look forward to all that the new year will bring. All right. Hand it off to Mr. Dearborn to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Barner. So what you heard from Mr. Barner was we're excited about the four new STEM positions that were created at the elementary level this year. We have, so those people, as you heard, are in place, one at each school, and they're going to be part of our specials rotation. So once every four days, like PE, music, and art, the students will be attending the STEM special. So what's going to be going on during this time? These teachers will be focusing on the Massachusetts Digital Literacy Standards, and that's going to look different at all the grade levels. What's happening in a kindergarten classroom is obviously different than what's happening in a fifth-grade classroom, and developmentally appropriate. So coding could be taking place in both places, but obviously in kindergarten, that's going to look different, and we're going to complex skills as they move through. We're really excited for that, and one of the things that we'll really be focusing on is the seven digital literacy practices, which are creating, connecting, abstracting, analyzing, communicating, collaborating, and researching. So I think we'll, we've already seen that in our STEM classes already, and that's the teachers are just getting going, so we're really excited for that. In addition to these, to the STEM, their responsibility is to teaching STEM, they're also going to be running our libraries. So they're going to be highlighting different series and topics to ensure the students still have the opportunity to check out books and enjoy the amazing collections that we already have in the library. So they're going to be kind of dual roles, and, you know, that will again look different in both of the grade level, or all of the grade levels. Not only are we excited about the positions, we're also excited about the support that was provided by all of you, the town, and central administration, to be able to kind of change our media centers. It's still a work in progress, but throughout this support, we're able to transform these places with new furniture, collaborative working spaces, new technology equipment, and we're excited that this is going to be part of our school this year and going forward. We're still working with some of our consultants from different vendors to bring this materials in there, so it's going to look different and evolve as the year goes on, and I'm sure as the years go on, it's going to evolve into a space that is going to be tremendous for our students. I think our staffs are excited about it, I think the teachers that are teaching are really excited, and the students have been really excited that, telling us, "We have STEM today, we have STEM today." So they've really built into it, or accumulated into it really well. So I think it's a wonderful piece for our learners and for our students, and we can't thank you, all of you, enough for your support in this.
Thank you.
Ryan, who's got double duty now?
I do. Bear with me. Thank you, good evening. First, I'll talk about professional development and finish with a facilities update. Now, we feel very confident about our plan for professional development this year. Teacher training will continue to be differentiated to meet the needs of our educators. Classroom teachers will be devoting a lot of their time to English, Language Arts, and Math training this year, while non-classroom teachers will receive professional development targeted to their instructional area. Tonight, we'd like to highlight the training that will be provided to our classroom teachers. So literacy professional development will continue this year. The Outside Literacy Expert will deliver two half-day workshops on interactive read-aloud. Additional professional development opportunities will be facilitated by our K-through-five ELA curriculum coordinator, Shannon Finley, and the team of literacy specialists in each building during grade-level team meetings and job-embedded collaboration in the classrooms. Topics of focus include, for ELA professional development, is using data to differentiate literacy instruction, supporting students in vocabulary development, implementation of foundations in our third-grade classrooms, and advanced word study in grades four and five. An advanced word study will be added to support students' phonics, spelling, and morphology. Other opportunities for professional development time this year outside of those half-day workshops will be curriculum meetings, staff meetings, the weekly grade-level team meetings. We have the full-day PD, the ed camp in the wintertime, and topics discussed at these meetings will be social-emotional learning, diversity, equity, inclusion, science, social studies. There will be a heavy emphasis on math training and professional development this year. Last spring, a math audit with an outside consultant was completed, and the goal was to ensure that math curriculum, resources, and instructional practices were meeting the needs of all of our learners and teachers throughout the elementary level. And the audit determined that we needed consistency in resources, or we needed the consistency in resources of a program. And we need to maintain and enhance our math workshop model of instruction, just like we have the workshop model in literacy, we wanted to make sure that we maintain that in math as well. So the solution or the outcome of the math audit was for us to adopt the Bridges math curriculum. A little bit about the Bridges math curriculum is that it's a comprehensive math curriculum for grades K through five. It has a student-centered approach. Again, it promotes the workshop model in the classroom. It requires collaborative learning and instills perseverance in our students. It allows teachers to provide differentiated instruction for our students, and Bridges focuses on developing in students a deeper understanding of math concepts and the ability to solve new and complex problems. Lastly, Bridges provides an engaging selection of visual models, manipulatives, games, apps, and other unique learning materials. Components included with the curriculum and purchased by the district include Number Corner, which is a skill-building program. It provides daily practice with a broad range of mathematical concepts and fifteen to twenty minutes of engaging instruction. Resources for intervention were purchased. They were supplemental target, supplemental resources that target small-group instruction resources to match student needs. And lastly, Forefront was purchased as well. It's a data collection analysis tool, and this was recommended by Bridges, and this data platform will assist educators to leverage assessment results to drive instruction. The principals are very grateful for the work of the math specialists, Sheila Ronaldo and Jennifer Teresian, and we're really looking forward to partnering with them throughout this school year and having them work very closely with our teachers to implement this new curriculum. We'd also like to thank central administration and the business office for their tremendous support in acquiring the Bridges program and helping us secure all the necessary resources in professional development. So that's my professional development update. I can answer any questions now or later.
Do you want to do, why don't we do all of it together? And then we'll ask questions.
So the facilities update, I'd just like to thank Don Anderson and his team from Building and Maintenance, and there, a lot of their projects involve transforming our media centers into those STEM classrooms, which involve a lot of painting. At Fisher, I know that they installed a hardwood floor. Some other spaces were designed, I know Elm Street, they removed the large counter from the media, the checkout counter, to allow space. So they were, they were busy doing that, but they also found time to paint a couple of classrooms over at Boydun, paint the computer room and the gym. They also created four new learning spaces at Boydun by constructing walls, secured some whiteboards, installed some ceramic tiles, and replaced flooring thresholds and ceiling tiles over at Boydun. At Fisher, like I said, they transformed our media center into a beautiful STEM lab, lab or classroom. They also updated the paint in the, in the media center and painted a couple of offices as well. At OPR, they replaced several windows, they painted the media walls, and they removed an old walk-in freezer and installed a new one. And at Elm Street, in addition to the media center, they installed projector screen and also secured some whiteboards and removed some bookcases and things like that in the media center. Throughout the, so thank you to Don Anderson and his team, and also throughout the summer, our custodial staff were once again hard at work cleaning classrooms, cafeterias, auditoriums, stripping and waxing floors, and cleaning rugs, and we're very appreciative of their efforts, because when our students returned, they came, and our staff, returned to a building that was shining and welcoming environment for our, for our staff and students. So we'd like to thank Ed Johnson, Joe Feldman, and Greg DeGregorio at Old Post Road, Neil McCormick, Mike Brennan, Anne Josie at Elm Street, Scott Manson, Eric Goodwin at Boydun, and Rick Suza, Hugo Cruz, and Eugene Kelly, our custodian who splits his time between Fisher and Boydun, and Rick and Hugo at Fisher. So thank you to those guys. Schools look great.
Thank you. Questions, Mrs. Gilligan?
I have just two. One is the Bridges program, have the teachers been trained enough, or are we going to, like, I guess the question is, are they ready to start using it now, or do we need to do training?
Yes, no, one thing I, I kind of left off because it was getting long, but they had training on the thirtieth, so August thirtieth was a full day of training for our teachers.
Yeah.
The principal- The principals, we all attended, um, a training even before that in, in mid-August that kind of prepared us to help teachers. So then the teachers had the full day on the thirtieth. Um, we just concluded grade-level team meetings, or we will this week, which is, um, an hour for each grade level to meet, and, and this week was focused on math. So they met with the math spec, math specialist, and we went all through Bridges. Um, the math specialist prepared a tremendous slideshow with all kinds of information on Bridges, how to access it. Um, and I, I was in a fifth-grade classroom today, um, and I know this has been happening, and happening in a lot of different, uh, classrooms, but the manipulatives are out, the collaborative groups are working, they're solving problems. There's just a buzz in the classroom with this new curriculum, and again, back to that workshop model and the collaborative learning, it's, um, it really fits right in. So, um, the teachers are definitely prepared, and they've already started the instructions.
That's exciting. That's great.
Can I add a little bit to that, Nancy?
Sure.
So, sure. So, first of all, Brian, a hundred percent support what Brian just mentioned. We do see this year, um, as a soft rollout. In other words, we don't expect our teachers in one year with one-day orientation for things to be perfect, but a couple of other things that we have in place. So Bridges is under a company called the Math Learning Center, and so they recommend three-part trainings throughout the year, all three things we have scheduled and set. One is the first day of orientation that all of our teachers attended, which was five hours of training. Uh, that was a complimented, um, or should have been done, two hours of reading in advance of that five-hour training. So in other words, it was really seven hours of work for our teachers right off the bat. And then we have two half-days already set up for them. One is the Math Learning Center recommends that in the early fall, after teachers have an opportunity to interact with the materials, that they, that they come in and they actually, um, help go through a unit, one of the units of study, and, um, model that, you know, give some instructional background, pedagogical practices. And then later on in the winter, they come back and they work, what Mr. Bemis was talking about, under Number Corner as well. So we try to tier it throughout the year that they'll have support. I also want to mention that, um, both the math specialists we hired, um, in trying to be, in preparation of this one-year rollout, we hired, again, recommended by the Math Learning Center, um, a consultant, TJ Jamison. He's actually out of Vermont, who has had extensive work with Bridges and the Math Learning Center, and he is working all year directly, um, with Mrs. Rinaldi and Mr. Teresian to support them in their rollout as specialists. So they have additional support as well in the work they're doing.
Perfect.
Okay. So it's, it's comprehensive, but we do not expect in, you know, one year that everyone will get it. But Brian, Mr. Bemis is a hundred percent right. The excitement's there. I think we have a lot of enthusiasm. Our staff excited, as the audit shared with us, and as was recommended, uh, a s, a s, a resource and something that ensured a little bit more consistency and allowed teachers to collaborate more effectively and allowed us to give assessments and measure data as an entire district, which is exciting for us.
That's awesome. Good. Good. My other question is unrelated to that, but you mentioned, um, that the STEM teacher is also responsible for the media, and, you know, like making sure that kids can check out books and things like that. Uh, just a thought, I, I know that parents love to come in and help out, but I was also thinking of fifth graders, you know, that, that, that there's an, an opportunity for kids to just be helpful, whether it's putting books back on the shelves or things like that, because, um, you know, I definitely think that you'd get some parent volunteers and/or, you know, you could get a team of fifth graders to just take a little-
I know at Boydun, at least, we've already had that conversation, and I'm sure it's happening at the other schools, because our fifth graders are always kind of looking to help out around the school, um, and they're very responsible and able to do that. I know they've helped out in the years past, and you're right, if parents can come, but sometimes the parent's schedule isn't as flexible, and our fifth graders are right upstairs, so we know where they always are. So, um, they can come down and help. That's a great idea.
But thanks. It sounds really exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're really looking forward to the, learning more about STEM as it goes on this year. So, looking forward to those updates.
Great.
Thank you.
Sean?
Sorry.
Yeah, just another-
Oh, guys, one more.
Sorry. I was waiting until Nancy was done to put the hand up. Um, just kind of following up on some of Nancy's questions. Um, so with the digital learning, uh, standards that you're working on, um, do you see those being infused into the classroom eventually, um, or kind of sticking in the STEM lab itself? Like, what do you see the relationship being between those? I know it's a special and the teacher's not there, but there's a lot of power in what the STEM teacher's doing to infuse, you know, with science, really, English, or any of the subjects.
So I, I think that's one of the rules of our digital learning coaches, um, that are going to work closely not only with the STEM teachers, but also our classroom teachers, and see exactly what, how we can do that. That's one of their priorities have always been since they've had that role, is what does it look like in the classroom, um, curriculum-wise? Um, so what, you know, some of those skills and standards that are being learned in the STEM labs are going to transfer really well into the classroom, and some of them are a little bit separate, maybe a, a separated skill. Um, but then that's also working with the classroom teacher to ensure that, that's, that still occurs when that digital learning coach is not there, um, and it becomes kind of just their common practice. So that is, is part of the goal as we move forward, um, to kind of mesh those together, um, and ensure that everybody has the capability of, of bringing our students learning, especially with the amount of technology that's in their lives now.
Yeah. I love the idea. Do, um, does the digital learning coach and the STEM teacher, do you know if they have time built into their schedules to collaborate?
Um, they're, you know, at least I can speak for Boydun, but I know at Boydun, they have, um, that's their, their mentor is in the building, so I think it's all of our schools. Um, so it's, it's already there, um, and their spaces are really close together anyhow. Um, so I know that they've done, and they've already collaborated this summer in some of the work that, I know that Dr. Han and Mr. Bemis had led around the curriculum. So they've been very much, the, the digital learning coaches and the, um, STEM teachers have already been working very closely together. Um, and I think the, the eight of them will continue to work closely together, not only this year, but next year and years to come as we evolve into what this is, you know, going to look like in the future.
Nice. Um, and kind of on the, the library side of that, um, with STEM being a subject in the library, or media center being full, um, is there opportunity for a teacher to bring a class down or to send a couple of students down anymore to access the books?
So they will have some opportunity within that, that forty-minute STEM time, um, and that's going to, we're still trying to work exactly what that looks like to take out the books and, and, um, be able to, you return books and all that kind of things that they did before the STEM. But I, you know, there are other times within the day that the, the STEM teachers will work with classroom teachers and identify that, you know, um, if they need to come down and, and, you know, a student has finished their book, we're not going to hold off and say, "You have to wait till next Wednesday. Come on down. We're going to get you another book so that you can keep reading."
Um, just a little bit of follow-up on that. I know we've spent a lot of time enhancing classroom libraries. Um, does that kind of support this as well as putting more books in the classroom and, you know, more books that their kids can have access right there?
Yeah, I think there's definitely a piece of that. Um, a lot of those books that we've been supporting in the classrooms go with our units of study, um, that we're using in our literacy curriculum. Um, so a lot of them are mentor texts or some of their books that they keep in the school, but I know that some teachers, um, you know, students are borrowing books from that classroom library to take home some of those avid readers that want to keep reading and keep reading and keep reading.
Nice. Um, and then just, um, one more, uh, Boydun specific. As mentioned, there's four new learning spaces created.
Yes.
Um, so I'm not familiar with Boydun at all. I'm sorry about that.
No, that's all right. Come on down.
But I was just wondering what the impact of that is for your building. I know it's not easy to create four new spaces. I was wondering what they were used for.
So we, um, we had two large kindergarten classrooms, um, quite large classrooms, and what was hap, what happened was we, well, not we, I'm using this word, we, it was Donnie Anderson's in building maintenance, um, put a wall between the two of them, um, and made them two separate learning places, and that's where the VIP program is housed. Um, so on both sides of the two classrooms, um, the VIP spaces are there. Dr. Goff was actually over today and visited them. Um, they've come out amazing. Not only the work that, um, Donnie and his guys have did, but the work that the VIP teachers have done to set up the spaces, um, are tremendous. So it, the, it impacted, you know, us in other aspects of the school, of other teachers moving around, but that was the biggest impact of moving that space to a kind of a, a different area in our school.
Yeah, I was really impressed at the learning centers, that these teachers were able to create in different areas around the room, because it was impressive.
Nice. Um, and just, uh, around Bridges, I'm a huge Bridges supporter. I love it. All, um, the resource that you said, um, the connections to collaboration. Um, it is early and, you know, it does take time to pull in all of that, and Number Corner especially, and, um, just want to know, like, the pulse of the teachers now, and, you know, whether it's, you know, anxious, overwhelmed, excitedly, you know, hoping that everything falls together. Um, I, I, I'm sure it will, um, but just wondering.
Yeah, I think, I would say all of the above. I think they were, they were excited back in the spring when they had a, a chance to, to meet with the outside consultant with the math audit and just talk about, um, teaching and learning in the area of mathematics, and then to find out that they had a program coming. Um, I think there was, you know, they've done a trem, the classroom teachers have done a tremendous effort over the last couple of years to create their own curriculum, and that was a lot of work. Um, so now to know that they would have just the, the anchor of a, of a common curriculum among the, the four eleman, elementary schools, um, was a sense of relief. And then I think when Dr. Han stopped by with all the boxes in the summertime, and they saw the amount of, um, resources that, um, you know, to the credit of, um, school committee and central administration to purchase everything that comes with Bridges, um, so that teachers had everything that they needed, um, they were very excited about that, but overwhelmed. So we need to keep reminding them it is a soft rollout, um, but we just wanted them to have everything that they needed. So they're excited. Um, you know, the, the math specialists are checking in with teachers consistently, seeing what they need for help, um, offering help, and also reminding them of the soft rollout and, um, just start, get acclimated to the program, and, um, students are excited. So, uh, we're off to a great start, and as Dr. Han, uh, said, that professional development will be a key part of what we do this year, and, um, the, the, again, back to the weekly grade-level meetings, there'll be constant conversations and sharing of instructional practices and just experiences in general. Um, it, it make for a great year.
Thank you.
Yes. I think you're actually excused. Thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, is Principal Martin of Daniel Feeney Preschool.
Good evening, everyone, um, school committee, administration, my colleagues. Um, so we've had a great start. I think I'll echo a lot of what my colleagues have said. Um, we are, we welcomed, um, on September sixth, in a driving rainstorm, we welcomed ninety-four of our youngest students in the district. That made for an easier arrival, I have to say, because it was much easier for the kids to separate because they didn't have a choice because it's a boring rain. Um, so that is our, easily our largest number, starting a year to date. Um, so, and, and that's, um, and we are serving forty-four children who are identified as receiving special education services. Um, so over the past few years, we have, um, expanded rapidly in all ways, and we are responding to the needs of our youngest students in our community, um, while supporting our families as the gateway to the district, uh, which is a really humbling, um, responsibility that we have. Um, we appreciate your support. This year, we were, um, we had six positions at the preschool, which is a lot for a small school. So we have two, um, new moderate special educators, um, a new occupational therapist who we share with Elm Street School and Byrd Middle School, and, um, three new educational support personnel. So we're very fortunate. So thank you for your ongoing support of the preschool. Um, this year, we've adjusted some of our programming to reflect the ever-changing needs of our students. Um, so we have, um, our four half-day programs, AM and PM. We have two of our four-and-a-half-day full inclusion. Um, we do have our one, um, very instructional program, our substantially separate preschool, um, classroom. Um, and we have a, a four-morning classroom and a five-morning classroom where, with a small group, um, with a small number of special education students who stay in the afternoon. So I'll quiz all of you on that. But it, it allows us to really robustly provide, um, in a very interdisciplinary way, um, for the students and their needs. Um, so it allows for flexibility within the program and to respond for, you know, chi, children who, um, who have varying levels of needs. So it's, it's, so far, it's been successful. Um, and the first eight days have been, um, busy. Uh, it, we thank, um, the custodial staff, a, as my colleagues have mentioned, for their work in cleaning our building. It looks beautiful. Um, the environment is really warm and welcoming. Um, so the first, you know, eight days of school have been filled really with a lot of relationship building, um, learning routines, which is huge, lining up, walking into a classroom, hanging up your backpack, um, making friends, turn-taking. And this month, our theme is focusing on feelings and families. Um, and so we do a lot of community building that way. Um, as a matter of fact, I just, um, we had our popsicles, a pre, uh, preschool event this evening, and we had a lot of families come. Um, and I just have to say that, um, you know, my, the staff didn't attend, but just the, the parents were coming up to me regularly just commenting on, um, how happy the kids are and asking them, like, "Where's Miss Stephanie? And where's Miss Cassie? And where are they coming?" And the kids are talking about them, and it's just really nice to hear in such a short time that, that, um, partnership and relationship that's been, um, built. Next week, we will host our first PAC meeting and our first school council meeting. Um, we continue with a curriculum, uh, focusing on for social-emotional learning because so much of the focus at, um, preschool, as it is with all levels, is, um, really focusing on the whole child. Um, that's extremely important. Um, and we've used the zones of regulation and social thinking, um, to work with the kids on, uh, feelings and, um, expectations. Uh, we do use foundations, which is used at the elementary level. Um, we're used, we use the handwriting without tiers program, um, for handwriting and fine motor skills because we find that's developmentally appropriate for children who are three to five. Um, we are also, um, incorporating the Hegarty, um, early phonics program, um, for the preschool, for the young pre, preschoolers, and then the older preschools. Um, we continue to work around inclusivity with our curriculum materials, books, songs, um, and other partnerships and increasing our preschool library. Um, families have been, um, like I said, very supportive, um, and we're grateful for their partnership. Um, it's incredible the amount of support that we have at the preschool, so we're really fortunate. Um, our teachers do an amazing job of communication weekly via updates. We use Smores. We use the Remind app. Um, the teachers use Photo Circle. We use Twitter. Um, and, um, and lastly, I want to specially thank you, our, our central office staff, um, the administration here, as well as everybody, the transportation office, Dr. Quilly, who's not here, um, just Mark Helfrey in the business office, just everybody who, um, I probably call every day to help, um, but I couldn't do it without their support and the support of the colleagues behind me. So we look forward to a, to a great year at the preschool. And you're invited to come anytime. Please do.
Any questions?
Just one, sorry. Uh, just a quick question. Um, we've talked about space being a little bit of an issue in the past. I was just wondering how this year has started space-wise and, you know, what the impact of the current space has on what you can do with the program going forward?
We've, um, so we, we've moved some classrooms around. We've, we've gotten creative, um, in far, as far as our space, and right now, we're accommodating, um, all seven of our classrooms, and we were also able to re-convert our motor room back to a, uh, back to a motor room, whereas we had to temporarily convert it to a classroom. Um, so there's been, you know, some, you know, moves, you know, I've moved, um, so we've converted spaces to, um, be more functional, you know, classroom spaces. So, um, we're, we're, our, our footprint, I mean, from the time, this is my fourth year, so we've grown, um, but so far, we're able to accommodate, um, the students, you know, that we have and the students' needs. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to note, the ninety-four kids, that's exciting, but it's also, you know, a lot of work to do, a lot of little ones. Um, but I, I always felt that the preschool was sort of a, a well-kept secret, and I think you deserve credit for, for the fact that it's an amazing place for kids to go to preschool.
Thank you. Yes. There, I mean, thanks to the staff who work, you know, with, they do a tremendous job, and, um, yeah, it, it's great. It, it's, um, it's, it's a lot of fun. It's, as Dr. Goff says, if you're ever having a bad day, go to the preschool. It's fun. It's, um, you know, I'll, I'll just say, I'll leave with this. I was in one of the classrooms, um, yesterday, and I was just sitting there during circle time, and, and one of our teachers, Miss Stephanie, she doesn't have students on Wednesdays. So she went in because the classroom that she went into, a lot of those kids were hers last year. So they're all sitting at circle time, and there's this little boy, if he's sitting here, there's two other kids, and then Stephanie McMahon is sitting here, and he's leaning back. He's like, "Miss Stephanie, Miss Stephanie", trying to get her attention, and she's got, "Miss Stephanie", and then she leans back, and she's like, "What? I love you."
Oh.
I mean, like, how can you not, you know, I said, "You need to write that down because you'll remember that forever." It's just- It's just, it's, it's pretty awesome, so, thank you.
Seriously.
Thanks, Julie.
Nice job.
All right. Do you mind if I just?
Sure.
All right. And I know you all may have some homework or not, but you've got an early day tomorrow, so you may.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
All right. That was a lot. A lot of good.
Yeah, a lot of good, a lot for the the opening, right? Opening schools have showed a amount of time for ten days.
All right, Mr. Frischa is up for the information on capital.
So um I would mention that we, as far as our capital process goes, our timeline officially began in May, where we started to really compile a list of items and things that we're looking for that are um wants that are outside of our operating budget and looking for resources outside of our normal budget. Um, although it starts to come together in May, this is an ongoing process. We're always talking about where are the resources that we could take advantage of that we need to fund the things that we just don't have within our operating budget. Um, so it began in May um with meetings with the school committee, you guys, and the school administration, um and so and follow, was followed by submissions of the initial capital list to the town administrator. That's uh step one. Currently, the town administrator, capital committee, and finance committee have all made their recommendations for capital items for all town departments. So we've all presented, you know, to the capital committee initially, the finance committee after that, the town administrator. We always have ongoing discussions with with Jim and his team. Um, so we've completed that process and now we're waiting for the warrant to be generated and then town meeting for the final approval for our capital. So um I think we're well positioned. I'll go through each item kind of at a high level. Um, obviously, whatever questions you have, feel free to ask. Um, all three groups voted to support year one. So our first priority is uh our technology plan. All three groups that I mentioned, the town administrator, capital committee, and FinCom all voted to support a one-year funding of our um technology plan, which is three hundred thousand dollars. The proposal was eight hundred and eighty, so about nine hundred thousand over three years. There is initial support for year one. There was a lot of dialogue about what belongs in capital versus what belongs in an operating budget. I think that'll be an ongoing discussion amongst members of these committees in town um as we move forward throughout this process and probably in the years to come. So that was year one, priority number one. Priorities two through four are large items. Um, so the first one was design services for Walpole High School, which totaled three million dollars. Um, and that is about ten percent of the construction, proposed construction uh budget for the high school. And we agreed to hold until the fall, uh, I should actually say the spring, when we have a better certainty about the middle school project, right? And that's the next item to come. But we've agreed to kind of wait and see where that project goes before committing to our funding to the high school project. So uh number three on the list was our middle school contingency. There is, um, as I think many people know, construction these days has been really challenging for a variety of reasons involving labor, inflation, logistics, and supply chains. Um, and we've had to make some cuts uh to the middle school project as we move along and the school committee has expressed a concern about that and that we don't want to see this this uh project, which we all so are excited to see to completion, we don't want to see it become diminished and the purpose of that middle school lose its real um power to educate and for our teachers and our students as well. So uh we are looking, we are hoping for the ninety percent construction estimates. We're keeping our fingers crossed that those come in uh on budget or a little bit above budget, probably more realistically, but it's within our means to manage that without having to need this extra money that was set aside. And as I said, that's a three million dollar um placeholder. I think Nancy used that as a term that I thought was really good. It's a placeholder. You guys have raised a concern. Everyone has heard it and they are willing to listen and and monitor this as we move forward. So no commitment of funding now, but a definite concern and a commitment as we move forward for looking at other sources for that project if need be. Uh, number four, fourth priority for the school committee was the HVAC at Walpole High School, had a price tag of a million dollars. Um, town administration is aware, as we are as well, that there are a lot of incentives that are out there that will become available. Uh, this is one of those projects that's ARPA-eligible, which uh means that the COVID funding and the ARPA relief funds are fit really well with what they were intending those dollars to be used for. So we really like that as far as ARPA goes, but if that didn't work, we'd be looking for capital funding or a commitment from the town in some other method. So again, that was an item that wasn't funded or supported necessarily through capital, but I think we have a strong sense that that will be funded through other means. Um, so that was our number four. Priority number five was the Elm Street traffic signal. The town administrator has a has a good sense that there's a um a potential for funding sources outside of capital to fund that project. That's, if you're not familiar with that, that's a traffic signal uh in front of the Elm Street School on Route twenty-seven. It would help manage the flow of traffic and get the queuing of cars off of twenty-seven and onto the site, increasing safety uh at that location. Um, so we are again waiting, I know I keep repeating this, uh to see how that funding source pans out and um we're hopeful that that would be an alternate to capital to fund that project. So again, Elm Street traffic signal was not funded or recommended at this point. So having said that kind of non-funded stuff, let's talk about the things that were funded. So priority number six was the stab, STEM lab renovations. I don't need, think I need to talk more about it. You've got a pretty good sense of how important these spaces are and that the work has already begun in all of those spaces. Uh, we had asked, the school committee had asked for four hundred thousand dollars and all three groups that I mentioned earlier supported this project at three hundred thousand dollars. When asked, is that adequate or enough to do what we need to do, um I agree that that extra hundred thousand would not be an issue to get that funding in there. We've already been talking about this for months and months. School committee supported those additional STEM teachers and this was the second phase of building out the spaces for those teachers. So that work's already begun, but that was supported at three hundred thousand dollars on a four hundred thousand dollar request. Priority number seven was science equipment for the elementary high school. It was a hundred thousand dollar request. All three groups supported that fully. I think we, I thought we had a nice discussion with uh FinCom in particular about, you know, what that funding would be used for. Uh, I think they were very excited to hear some of the ideas that we're looking at, real cutting-edge types of ideas, especially at the high school level. As things evolve and technology evolves, the things that we have uh we're able to access for teaching um and instructing in these areas has become uh much more available. So things like gene mapping, hydroponics, all these things that maybe in the past were really costly or not available are now available and these are the things that we've highlighted uh within that hundred thousand dollars. And the elementary is in there also and that's to supplement what they have and add to what they piloted in some of their science classrooms already. Um, so that was fully funded at a hundred thousand. And then priority number eight was the elementary HVAC installation. This is really beginning the discussion about HVAC in our elementary schools. Currently, we have one school, uh, the Elm Street School, that is fully HVAC, has air conditioning, heating through the same system. Um, so they're already in a good position, but the other three do not have those those niceties and necessities, I would actually argue, not niceties. Um, so we've gotten that discussion started. Those same incentives that are available for the high school would also be available for the elementary school. So I think there'll be a learning process that happens with the high school that we will take that knowledge we gain and parlay it into the three elementary schools as we move forward. Again, those, that would be ARPA-eligible, doesn't have to be at the high school, can be at the elementaries as well. So there are other funding means, uh depending on how large the incentives are, to fund those projects as well. So we'll keep an eye on that and hope to move forward in that direction. So it's a high-level view. We did a lot of extensive discussions with capital and uh FinCom and I think all of it really of a positive nature, so um that's my summary. I'd be happy to answer or elaborate on any questions that you you might have.
Now, through my chair, and well, first, thank you for your work and colleagues who, I think, did a triple crown of meetings last week uh for this. Just one question, I just, it's important to acknowledge that this is a a different sort of space than normal. Uh, we've sort of regularized the the calendar now, so that the next thing will change is just the way we're funding it. There's all these extra uh opportunities out there, so I think it really broadens what we can do. But I thought, in the haze of all the meetings and zooms we've had on this, I thought um Town Administrator Johnson had mentioned uh the possible availability of green communities funding for the hit, uh, the nineteen oh seven wing uh HVAC and I think that would just be something we should continue um to keep to the forefront, especially given the fact that this board led in the application and uh approval of the green communities grant. I think um you're quite right. Obviously, all this is ARPA-eligible, HVAC is a slam dunk for ARPA. But just as we look even beyond ARPA, we had a really productive com- um discussion with our teachers, a negotiation about the um the physical plant, the uh the airflow, uh the the temperature control of our buildings. And uh the good thing about the green communities grant is in conjunction with incentives from the Commonwealth, this, you know, there is, there are kind of credits back and um I think these are projects we should just be constantly talking about um that that are really good fits for those type of funds, um can can actualize some industry rebates as well. So I I I think we, as we just continue to, like, as you say, learn through this process. We should, in our advocacy for the town, really point out the fact that, number one, we were, we were instrumental in getting to become a green community, but also that we have really shovel-ready um projects across our our entire, sort of from the preschool to the high school that that could be, we can utilize these funds for. And hopefully, because we'll be in there, hopefully, uh, five, six, seven years out, we can still be making really strong cases uh for those type of funding sources.
Just a quick one. Nancy?
Couple of things. I I think that I agree exactly with what Mike and Bill are saying in that I think it's important for all of us to be conversant on this topic because um we started out with the idea that we had some big-ticket items that we were bringing forward to capital and we're not coming away with those. We're still in a good spot in that we're having the right conversations, but we we don't have money in our pocket at this point. So I think it's just important for people to know, the first item that was a priority for us was our three-year technology plan. And what evolved through this process is that we're getting funding for one year and there is talk about moving, moving the budget so that technology funding will be part of our operating budget rather than a capital expense going forward. I'm concerned about that because the only way we should agree to it is if, in fact, our operating budget is inflated to really be able to afford it. Because prior to having it capital be the source for funding, there were many years where we couldn't fund technology. Because when budgets are tight, you have to fund the sped budget, you have, ideally don't want to lay people off to buy computers. So, you know, I think it's, it's just an important thing for us to keep in mind as this discussion evolves. What happened at the end of the most recent finance committee meeting was that um the chair of finance now is Denny Crowley and he's recommending that after town meeting, there's a meeting of our board along with the finance committee, along with the the select board, to discuss process. And I think we just have to be clear about, there's a downside to putting technology into our budget unless we're, and I think we also have to let the revenue projections develop a little bit because this year, we're only into the beginning of FY twenty-three, I guess it is. And um this year, the town administration believes that they brought forward more revenue than they felt comfortable doing. I think that that's, I think it's going to be fine, but on, we, it's too soon to say what revenue will look like for for the next couple of years. So we should be aware that, one, before we agree to putting money in, or before we agree to putting um technology into our operating budget, there should be some some serious questions, I think. Um, and then the uh the others are, we need to just keep alive this conversation of, once we know that we're on solid footing with the middle school, which we all agreed, we don't want to just be greedily asking for money, but we we may need some help. And we've made that clear to both capital budget and to FinCom. Um, the recommendation at town meeting that that the FinCom is going to bring forward is putting some of the money that hasn't been spent into a capital reserve account. And there was a bunch of discussion about that at the FinCom meeting too because it takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting to get money out of a capital reserve account. And I think we made it crystal clear that we're going to be asking for the finance committee to support us if and when that happens because very likely, we're the ones who are going to be asking to get the money out. So the, it's, it's just important for everybody to feel like they understand, we're, we're in a good spot, but there are also a lot of new people on FinCom and on capital budget. So some of the questions that were coming up, in my opinion, I think they're coming from a a good-hearted place, but there's sort of a naivete that it's our job to to make sure that we challenge people before we just agree to things that might have a downside.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah.
Now, through my chair, to to Nancy's point, which I think is a strong one and I think it was a good discussion on Thursday, I guess I I'm less concerned about where the technology resides, but I think, you know, the real, the point to that is, and when you said you mentioned things like special ed, um and things that we must do, I think we, as we have that conversation, we have to point to the fact that like, technology is not some, it's it's not a.
It's not a must you do.
It is something that we we have to do. It is so, it has become, as we, as we heard tonight, it has become so integral to what we do here that um it can't be um sidelined. And it was interesting, in that finance committee discussion, we did have this sort of perennial conversation about how this very large amount of free cash is not going to be there forever and our um, and our uh, our capital budget comes from the free cash, which is a fluctuating number. So I think, I'm excited for that kind of joint discussion because I think, you know, the point I want to make is just make sure that this, we're all clear about its um, this department and and this plan in particulars necessity towards like the the operation of student learning because it's um, it's so central. And I did think also, from my remembering, when we had that discussion about putting the high school money into stable, uh, capital stabilization, it was a very positive. People were talking about, we're putting this in with with the clear knowledge that it's, it's going in there to to be parked and and the good thing uh for, you know, the two super financial people watching at home, I'm sure, is when you take money out of regular stabilization, it can have a negative effect on the town's bond rating and some of your financial outlooks, whereas capital stabilization, and I think that was, uh, Jody Cunio kind of clarified that for everybody in the room, capital stabilization, that does not happen. So we, we're not, by parking it there, I think, um, there's the two-thirds problem, which is, you know, we're all aware of, but it doesn't sort of hurt us because I think sometimes, not not in this era, but in the past, um, in some of the things we ask for, it's like, oh, this, the school committee has asked, has some sort of downsides or negative effects or or stumbling blocks for the town. So I think in in this case at least, um, there's no real kind of financial downside because we're looking very closely in the future about some of our larger projects such as the high school. We're going to have to look very closely at our our debt schedule and that's something we've been having long-term uh dialogues about as well, so there's a lot on the horizon, definitely.
Thank you. Another comment?
Just to echo what's already been said, um, and again, emphasize the need that if you are going to, you know, not spur the moment, but rapidly adjust how you decide to fund technology, that you need to continue to fund technology and it's not a removal of something from your budget to fit it in. are going to, you know, not spur the moment, but rapidly adjust how you decide to fund technology, that you need to continue to fund technology. And it's not a removal of something from your budget to fit it in. It is necessary to add those funds into the regular operating budget. And I don't see that as my job on the school committee, is to find the places for that to happen. I think that's the town's job, to put that funding in by giving us, you know, whenever it comes time for an increase, whatever we get, in addition to however much the district would propose for technology going forward. You know, technology isn't just Chromebooks. Technology is an entire background of infrastructure that goes into supporting that. And that takes a lot of money to fund, and a lot of, you know, space needs to be made for if something goes down, or breaks, or needs maintenance. There's just a lot there. So I would hope, as was emphasized, you know, we do get the support, but just being, you know, Technology Director myself, my funding does happen to all be in the budget, so I do see the negative effects of it every year. By 50 less Chromebooks this year, right, Sean?
Yeah.
So that's what it comes down to. And, you know, it's hard to manage. There's no room for error sometimes.
Thank you.
Ms. Gavin. I just remembered two other things I wanted to mention. The money that was put into capital stabilization, that's a new fund that has been only created recently. We have a stabilization fund, which is what Bill was talking about. If you take money out, it does potentially affect your bond rating. I mean, there are times when you might have to do it, but that's probably when every other town is doing it, like after 9/11, if you had money, which we didn't at that point. You know, that would have been a reasonable reason to take money out of stabilization. You try not to. But there will be old-time town meeting members who will say, we never take money out of stabilization. So it's important for us to know that this was set up specifically for things like this, and it's different from the traditional stabilization-type accounts. And, oh, there was one other thing I was going to say. See what Bridget wants. There was
I was just going to say that we can't forget about the ARPA money.
I was going to say that.
And we went in front of the Select Board to talk about that. We've got our HVAC, that third wing at the high school. I know that we talked about that at FinCom, and we had, you know, some, a lot of discussion about that and some support for that as well. But I think we need to make sure that we advocate for some of those ARPA funds to go towards that, because as you mentioned, Bill, you know, that's what it's for. HVAC would be, it's perfect.
Through you. Nancy, you going to lose it again?
I wrote something down. I'm not going to forget.
I think it's important to lovingly and gently point out that the community of Wapo got more than seven, between county and any, any you entitlement money, got more than $7 million. And to date, we have only received or utilized, what, $450,000 for our first school project? So we're 66% of the budget. We're the largest employer in Wapo. We educate everyone's children, almost 4,000 little humans in our care. We need a piece of that pie. And that piece needs, and, you know, I trust our colleagues have heard us, but as we begin to move into sort of Wapo's second half of the allocation, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to continue to watch these discussions closely, to continue to annoy our dear friends on the Board of Selectmen, who are by statute the people in charge of this, to say that, you know, it can't all be pipes. And I don't believe that's going to be the case, but I think it's always, as what Nancy is saying, it's good to be in the room, having these conversations, as opposed to watching it at home a couple days later on YouTube and finding out.
Ms. Gavin.
My point was very similar to what you just both made. There's ARPA funding, and there's free cash that's being used for the fall town meeting. And a significant amount of both of them is not coming to us, with the understanding that we pulled off a request for funding the high school right now. We need to hold back to see where we are with the middle school. We've been super clear. But we need to keep track of the two-thirds, one-third mentality, because an awful, an awful lot of the funding that will happen at fall town meeting is heading for the municipal side. We understand it. And some of the ARPA money, the only one that I know of that's been truly dedicated right now, is money for the water and sewer department. And it's just one piece of it, but we have to keep those amounts in mind, because, and I think we've made the right case for it, but it's just a matter of making sure everybody feels like they know how to talk about it when it comes up.
And through you, there were four projects early.
Oh, true.
And again, a couple of them had already been allocated
Right.
Funds for town meeting, which means the money goes back into the general fund. So perhaps maybe through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Fisher, we could, like, ask Jody for an update of what Wapo's requests have been thus far and where they are in the pipeline, because I believe they made a number of other, the Select Board has applied for a number of other pieces of funding. So just be clear, like, what Wapo asked for thus far, how much is left on the table that the Select Board hasn't applied for yet. Obviously, the county side of the money is what one applies for. If it's our money, we can kind of do with what we want, with lax restrictions within the law, just to kind of see, you know, what is left and what, just get a better sense of the next time they're going to be talking about this. And what part of the front row we'll be sitting in when they do.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
That's all I got, now.
Thank you all. All right. Superintendent Report.
I think the principals said a lot of it, but just again, you know, in these 10 school days, it was great to welcome all of our students, and it was nice to see their smiling faces, because last year, I believe they were in masks. So it was nice to actually, you know, see them come in and really see them to participate in engaging collaboration and interactive instruction. We welcome students moving in from, all the way from our neighboring towns, to those who return to WPS from charter vocational and private schools. We welcome families who moved to Wapo from other states, such as California, Florida, Pennsylvania, and Texas, and also from other countries, such as Brazil, Russia, Saudi Arabia, and the Ukraine. We commend staff, again, for their hard work that led up to a successful opening. It was great to have the opening kickoff meeting at the high school auditorium. You know, we really missed having that. Dr. Han and I, we are, we have been, and will continue to go out to all the schools on a rotating basis. I'll be meeting with principals to discuss their goals and progress. And Dr. Han and I have been visiting classrooms to greet students and to really see, you know, everything that is going on in terms of teaching and learning. In terms of safety and security, I continue to meet and communicate with Chief Kelleher and the Wapo Police Department. Officer Hart is in the process of setting up Ellis drills for our students in our schools. Yesterday, I attended a conference that was presented by the Norfolk District Attorney's Office to learn about upcoming programs for our county that's designed to target behavioral and mental health issues. I was joined by Chief Kelleher, Officer Hart, Chief Bailey, our head nurse, Linda Anderson, and Wapo Health Director, Melissa Renering. Wapo Public Schools has also joined with the Massachusetts Schools Mental Health Consortium, which provides multiple student mental health support and resources. And tomorrow, I'll be going to the Tech Superintendent and School Committee Network meeting. At Tech, I think that's a neat, a great, tomorrow morning. Just a reminder, for the scholarships, please be advised that Fails, Leach, Rogers, and Cooney Scholarship application will be available on October 1st through October 31st. The application will be found on the district website and the superintendent's office. Awards will be for undergraduates at, who are at four-year accredited colleges, and they will be eligible for scholarships for each of their four years. And to be eligible, the student must be a graduate of Wapo High School. Also, mark your calendars, September 23rd and October 7th. We brought it back. Let's hope we have good weather, Dr. Han. Walk with the supers from 8:30 to 9:45, and that'll be at the Wapo High School tract. So it's another opportunity that's designed to promote community engagement and wellness. You can come for a portion, stay for the entire time, and just walk and talk with Dr. Han and me. So this is open to all community members. It doesn't have to be just for schools. And I'm glad I'm walking. It was nice to see everybody at the Wapo Road Race. We had a great turnout. I think there were almost 500 runners and walkers. It was just, it was nice to see people from, you know, our schools, our parents. So Ellie Hamilton was running from the Select Board.
Did you beat Sean again?
Sean, I don't think he ran this year.
No, I was not there this year.
Yeah. That counts as a win for you.
That's two years in a row now.
Going up is half the battle.
I think, yes, yes, yes.
There you go. That's important.
Yes, yes. It was a little humid on that day, and we just finished before the rain came down. I also just want to remind you to check out this great new resource for our families. You have a handout in your packet. It's the Online Safety Hub from LineWise, and it provides some phenomenal tools and resources and expert advice on the latest online safety issues that our families may be encountering. Anything from parent advice to setting up parental controls, app and game reviews, and home safety tips. And it's right on our website. And I want to thank Tom Reeve, our Director of Digital Learning, for really being proactive in securing this for us, because we're really working towards providing as much information and support for our families. So thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Sean?
Is there a question about the Mental Health Consortium? Is that a link that's going to go out, or would the
It's for, it's for our staff, and providing some resources, and it's great. It's about 160 communities that are a part, and it's free. So that's, that's great, too. Some really good resources. And I have to thank Carrie Denise DiO, because she came upon it as well and let me know about it. So we looked into it further, talked to the director, and we are, we are on.
Nice.
Excellent. Yeah. Thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
Old Business Middle School Building Project Update.
I know we don't have, but
Our chair is not here. Anyone have
Yeah, no, just to, just to continue to look on the website, there's always a three-week, you know, what's happening in the next three weeks. I know we had Eversource in there, that work will continue. They were installing temporary poles on-site, and then that will, the new poles, what will happen is that will reroute the power to the existing Byrd Middle School, and there'll be a power switch over at some point during, during off-hours. It hasn't been scheduled, so fingers crossed. So that, they're on-site, and then there's also site work with the project limit of work fence, and then we're waiting for the package for some further construction. So we will be, stay tuned. We need to set a date for groundbreaking.
I was wondering about that.
So we just kind of got word. So Mary and I are working on just getting, maybe getting some dates that, I call it herding cats, of trying to get everybody's dates to coordinate with town administration. But we'll get that out. We're hoping in October, we want to do it in October, if we can get a date. So that's exciting.
That's very exciting.
Cool. Thank you. High School Project Update. Mr. Han, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing specific from the working group. We did meet last, last week.
Yeah, we had a workshop, I know. Everything was last week. It was a marathon last week.
No wonder it feels like forever ago. We got to hear from Chris Blessing from TAP Hay to provide things that might be on the menu of options, and we have those to review and reach out with questions on ahead of the 4?
Another workshop.
October 4th, yeah.
October 4th, where our body will bring feedback.
Yeah. I thought Chris did a fantastic job, and there's hard copies, too, that if you want them, I have them for you. Fantastic job, and I think just being able to do it and being able to be concise, because we had the Finance Committee meeting right after. And, but just to see the different possibilities and how to figure out, okay, you know, now we've got to hone in, look at what our priorities are, and really make sure that we narrow down. And Chris will be at that next workshop, so that way, he's there to answer questions, and we can really have a discussion about what we saw, because we needed some time to process it. But it's exciting.
It is. It was great to see how all the pieces could come together or have domino effects on other pieces.
And thinking outside the box, too, of what they can create. And I think the important piece that I took away was the flexibility, you know, having some spaces that were flexible. So as years, you know, transpired that, we're able to change.
Thank you. Subcommittee Update?
No.
And we'll get a list out of Subcommittee. I think Sean had a couple questions, so, or potential moves, so we'll get that back out.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to Citizens Comments.
Actually, can I add one thing during there?
Absolutely.
The Drug and Alcohol Coalition is starting up again. And I was just thinking it would be good to mention to the community, because the Health Department runs this coalition, and their, their next meeting is going to be 6:30 on September 20, Tuesday, September 27th, at 6:30 in the evening, and it's a Zoom meeting. And during COVID, the Health Department had way too many things to worry about, so it was not anything that was going on. But it really is a good connection for people who are raising middle school and high school kids. So I just wanted to point it out, because it's a chance to hear from the Police Department, the Health Department, and the School Department, some of the things that you just might not know about. I mean, like, five, five or six years ago, most parents had no idea what vaping was, but kids were vaping. So it's just, it's just a chance to stay on top of what's going on in our community. And the fact that they're doing it by Zoom, I think is a great thing. So
That's great. Thanks for adding that.
So Mary, if you, maybe you could include the Zoom link in the notes. That's what I was thinking. But the meeting is September 27th. It's a Tuesday night at 6:30.
Great. Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah.
All right. Warrants, donations, and minutes.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following expense warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Warrant numbers are 223008, 223009, and 223010.
Second.
Got a motion by Sean, second by Bill. All those in favor. That says 500.
I would also like to make a motion to approve the following payroll warrants for the amounts listed in your packet. Those are 2305PA and 2307PA.
Second.
Got a motion by Sean, a second by Bill. All those in favor. 500.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to the Johnson Middle School and the Byrd Middle School from Bay State Textiles, in the amount of $141. And to the Byrd Middle School from HelpSee for $61.
Second.
Got a motion by Sean, second by Bill. All those in favor. 500. Thank you, Sean. Can you take the minutes?
Through you, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the open session meeting minutes of August 25th, 2022, the executive session meeting minutes of August 25th, 2022, and the workshop meeting minutes of September 8th, 2022.
Second.
Got a motion by Bill and a second by Sean. All those in favor. 500. Mark's not here. Mark's not here. Who's going to do the
Jonathan Toadger.
Good second?
Second.
Right. All those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.